The meeting of the county council will be up to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carol, you have the optional prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Faithful God, with the skills and time pressing toward the goals of our job, we direct our daily labor to the end task. We are born with talents and we are to use them toward the best we can do. We have been chosen to be committed to our constituents and the people of Erie County. We need to tell them that they can count on us, you and me. We will serve with our hands and hearts and commit our time and talents. We will lead and guide with the government and power and goodness and recommit ourselves at this time to be counted on. We pray this in our Savior's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Chairman Leon?
Here.
Hearing of the public. The public, if they call in, they would receive five minutes. If they don't call in, they will be able to speak for three minutes. The first one that called in is Jessica. Jessica, around, please.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I did want to pass out a little flyer update on what's going on at the COG and also just some information and introduce you to our Census Outreach Coordinator, who is second on your agenda to speak this evening. As you know, the COG's been around since 1993 and we're a voluntary association of municipalities. Our vision is that all municipalities in Erie County will achieve excellence through collaboration. What our role is to serve as a spokesperson for municipalities, to advocate for regional priorities, to assemble our elected officials, to coordinate regional programming, to facilitate communication between municipalities, and to provide staff support for key initiatives. Some of our highlights for 2019, you'll see from your paper there, our membership grew to the highest ever in the history of the COG. We gained Edinburgh as our 14th member in the beginning of 2019. That puts us where we represent over 205,000 residents of Erie County with our membership. We also have a workshop training series, which many of you have attended our workshops. That continues. We do have approximately 75 percent of Erie County municipalities participating in our workshops. This year, we have a couple more workshops before the end of the year. We have a workshop on fair housing, November 14th, out at Mill Creek Township, and a workshop on strategic planning for the fire service in December, December the 9th, in Summit. That's going to be put on by PSATs is helping us with that. You know, we also continue our joint bidding program and we administer that in order to save money for municipalities, as well as to help them to obtain bulk pricing discounts, as well as to meet their purchasing code requirements. That program, I did a comparison last year to see where we are at in terms of our performance compared to CoStarz. Many of the municipalities use CoStarz, which is a statewide joint purchasing opportunity for them. And CoStarz is a great vehicle for one and two purchases, if you're buying vehicle, playground, those type of things. But when you're looking for bulk discounts, the best way to go is through the COG. We found that a price comparison puts our prices 10 to 15 percent lower than what's on the CoStarz website and what the CoStarz vendors are offering. In addition, many of our local vendors do not participate with CoStarz because there's a cost to that, but they can always put in a bid with us so that they can be helping the municipalities to get the best prices and be compliant with purchasing codes. A couple other highlights, just to tell you about the year. We do have what we have called the Greater Erie Regional Trail Network up. That is a website at erietrales.org. The purpose of that is to promote the awareness and use of recreational parks and trails throughout Erie County. We know that municipalities don't have the budgets to advertise and do marketing for their parks and their recreational trails, so we do that together in a collaborative fashion. It certainly makes it look a lot more dynamic than all we have to offer here in Erie County. In 2019, we completed a second phase of a shade tree planting project in 11 municipalities. That project enabled us to plant 700 trees. We had a grant from ECR and we were able to match that with municipal match. The other couple of interesting projects, we recently completed an emergency vehicle preemption project with two municipalities, Summit and Mill Creek Township. Through a grant from ECR, we were able to complete all the traffic signalization with the preemption signals in those two communities. So that's a great project. Currently underway, we had the opportunity to apply for a grant through PennDOT to help Lawrence Park to be able to have a Main Street streetscape redesign. Very exciting project for Main Street. Main Street is a corridor from Iroquois Avenue to Water Street in Lawrence Park, and it really needs a little fresh look. I could see Councilman Leon shaking his head. Hasn't had a real streetscape and kind of a dress up and shine up how that corridor looks. It's a commercial corridor, lots of tenants. There's not a vacancy issue in that area, but those commercial businesses really could use some new curves and streetlights and decorative benches and curves and things like that, benches and planters, things like that. So we're undertaking that project with them, we're helping them with that. Another interesting project that we're in the middle of is a study of shared emergency management. The COG was able to, I won't say convince, but seven municipalities to work together to undertake a study of shared emergency management. The study is being conducted by DCED, one of their peers. It's the expert emergency management and evaluating if those seven municipalities could do something better, how they could share and be able to be more prepared for their citizenry in the event of an emergency.
Jessica?
Go ahead.
Your five minutes are up, but I'm going to allow you to continue because I really feel you should have come to one of the council caucuses in order to make a presentation.
Okay.
That would have probably been more appropriate than coming to a public meeting.
Okay.
But that's all right. Go ahead and continue.
Okay, I'll wrap up. Just a couple of things for you to know, and then I'll invite Michelle for her five minutes. We also have, you may know, a Fire and EMS Recruitment and Retention Committee, which we're working very hard on. I chair that committee to look at the issue of declining personnel, particularly in the volunteer fire, but also in paid and career regarding to EMS. So we're working on that as a committee to look at solutions to that problem. I'll transition, I'll finish up my minutes just to tell you, you know the COG is a partner in a project called the Erie County Census Outreach Project. That project, I thank you greatly for your support and your assistance with the funding on that. We have the ECR funding, but also we have 16 municipal partners and the county contributing to that part. That project is underway currently, and Michelle Jaggar, who's next on your agenda, is our Census Outreach Coordinator. Before I transition to her, I do want to take a moment to thank the council members for your service. I know that several of you are going to be entering retirement soon, and I do want to make sure that I thank you for your service, Councilman Law, Councilman Leon, and Councilwoman Fatiga. I appreciate your service to the county, and I wish you the best in your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Here, Michelle?
Michelle Jaggar.
Okay, Michelle Jaggar.
Thank you, thank you for your time. The Erie County 2020 Census Outreach Project is a multi-municipality project, which was created to provide education and prepare citizens in Erie County for the 2020 census in response to lower response rates, which are happening throughout the county. Erie County has several populations, which are known to be hard to count, including children under six, renters, English language learners, and rural populations. Additionally, the 2020 census will be available to be completed online for the first time, which will create an additional barrier for certain members of our community. We hope to overcome these barriers through education, and for instance, letting our people know that they can also complete the census via telephone. We want people to know that the census is fast and easy. It's 10 questions and takes only about 10 minutes, and that the data collected by the census is confidential. All identifying information cannot be shared outside the Census Bureau for 72 years, and it is a federal crime to violate this confidentiality. Most importantly, we want citizens to know that it is vital for our community for them to be counted. On average, each person who is counted brings $2,100 every year for 10 years into Erie County for federally funded programs such as Medicare, Medicaid, school programs, and housing assistance. It also provides data, which are important for planning for community resources, businesses, infrastructure, hospitals, and parks. Additionally, the data ensures fair representation in Congress. Pennsylvania has lost three congressional seats since the 2000 census, and we are at risk of losing an additional seat based on the 2020 numbers. Therefore, it is important everyone is counted in the 2020 census. I have started many outreach efforts to ensure a complete count, including flyers, speaking with residents at community events, and presentations to educate community members. Additionally, I'm coordinating the efforts at Erie County's Complete Count Committee to assist local agencies and community leaders to outreach to the populations they serve. Overall, I'm looking for more points of contact to reach out to our community members, which is why I'm presenting to you today, to get any feedback as far as methods to do so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? Once, twice, third and last time, thank you very much. Next on the agenda will be the minutes from the previous meeting. I'll entertain a motion for adoption.
I move the minutes from the October 15 meeting to be amended.
Moved by Andre. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Scott. Comments? Roll call on the minutes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next is the reports of county officials, county executive, and or designated.
None tonight, Mr. Chairman.
No reports. Next, the Finance Committee. Carol?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On last Thursday, we talked about and put on the agenda the second reading amending the Erie County Administrative Code for the Library Service Department and Library Board, and also the amendment to the Administrative Code to amend the bylaws of the Erie County Planning Commission, Article 2 and 3. We also have for new business, a library fund supplemental appropriation of $550 for additional branch community classroom rentals, and also the library fund budget supplemental appropriation of $7,000 for donation from the friends of the library. Another ordinance that we put on to be looked at and voted on, supplemental appropriation of $35,000 for human resources professional due to additional funds needed for contract negotiations. And then the next one is the first reading for appropriation of $10,127 for adult probation overtime for Erie City Police Department PCCD grant gun violence reduction. Now, this is a grant with no cost to the county. The next one is supplemental appropriation of $6,008 for creation of new line item for adult probation overtime for continuation of gun violence reduction for trolls. The next one, F through W, are in consideration of the budget. They're the first readings of the items that we have in the tax budget. Then going on to Resolution 38, the lease agreement with the Central Mall Partnership for Office Space located in downtown for Erie County Day Reporting Center. We have Resolution 39 approving the hired outside counsel to recover nationwide market value adjustment. Another resolution requesting emergency funds for Northwest Pennsylvania K-9 search and rescue. Another resolution to retain the Bostwick Design Partnership to undertake the Erie County Own Facilities Inventory and Master Plan. And last is possible sale parcels from the repository unsold property. That's all I have, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Carol. Next, I don't believe we had any Personnel Committee, did we?
No, Mr. Chairman, there's no report from Personnel.
Okay, under Other, Carl, will you ask for, make a report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am going to give a report from the Community College Committee and give this report, joining in with my colleague, Councilman Andre Horton. And I would like to express that today is a great day for all the residents of Erie County. We have been able to take a major step forward, several major steps forward, in our quest to bring community college education to the people of Erie County. We have been working diligently, and people have spent countless hours in doing this work, particularly volunteers such as Ron DiNacola, who serves on the Community College Committee, and Joe Maloney, who I'll mention again in another moment. This council had stepped forward on numerous occasions to show the courage and conviction that we have in bringing community college education to our community. We called on the governor and expressed to the governor that we needed him, and the governor has stepped forward. Mr. Chairman, you then followed up with a letter to the governor expressing that Erie County needed him, and the governor has stepped forward. And our committee sent a letter to the governor expressing that Erie County needs him, and the governor has stepped forward. Yesterday, the governor sent a letter to the Board of Education supporting a community college in Erie County and asking the board to approve a community college in Erie County. Today, there was a number of us that went to the public hearing that brought our, out of the subcommittee, our community college application and the report on the application from the Department of Education. And before that meeting began, the governor stepped forth with an additional letter designating Erie County the 15th Community College. We now, we have 14 presently. That language really propels us in a direction to really be under consideration, under serious consideration by the Board of Education at their November 14 meeting. There were several people from Erie that went down to the meeting today and spoke. We were joined by Erie residents, who are now in Harrisburg fighting on our behalf. I especially want to thank David Dix for the work that he helped us with, and I must also give a shout out to Autumn Anderson, who was there helping us on the ground as well. And I have to say that the report that was given by the Department of Education in regards to our application was nothing less than stunning. We hit every target or exceeded every target that they measure an application on to pursue our community college. And that's where I will say, this council, this county administration, and the people of Erie County absolutely owe a debt of gratitude to the dedication and professionalism of Joe Maloney. His numbers, his projections were absolutely right on target. The gentleman, Mike Dotz, who gave his report from the Department of Education, supported the analysis that was done, and it was very exciting to see. And then there were six of us that spoke and gave testimony, including the county executive, Ron DiNacola, Councilman Horton, and myself, Joe Maloney, Dave Tulio, and Mike Bachelor, representing several segments of our community. We're not going to let down. We still have a long way to go, but today is a day that we can be very thankful for, for all of the hard work that's being done. Our hard work is paying off. We are going to continue to work on behalf of the citizens of Erie County, and we will see this college application through, and I believe, to a positive vote by the Board of Education on November 14. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman, and I thank you.
I have a couple, you know, talking about the community college. You know, one issue that continues to come up is the fact that we didn't join the Northwest Pennsylvania Community College. One of the main reasons was simple. We would not have had any control of our curriculum. The other is rather simple. The NPRC is and was and will be in existence regardless of our input. The joining of that group would not have changed a thing for Erie County, except for NPRC gaining Erie County population. They still have that with their own guidelines, and I personally have not seen any reason to join based on those facts. That's why I've been in favor of a standalone community college. Tonight, we're voting to make changes to the Administrative Code in reference to the Planning Commission. In my estimation, is the right thing to do. We, as members of council, have to abide by the Home Room Charter and the Administrative Code of the County of Erie. One of the issues in here is something I've continued to maintain and try to see to it that the members of council, whether they're here now or in the future, follow the Administrative Code. And membership on authorities, boards, commissions, and other organizations shall not exceed two consecutive terms of office for a maximum of 10 years, unless specific exception is made by county council and approval of such organization and function of such organization. In other words, two terms is the limit. It's like saying to a council member who served three terms, and I've heard this from other council members, saying, well, they do a good job. But if they have three terms on council now, we're also term limited. It doesn't mean you can go out and say, well, I'm going to run for a third or fourth term because I did a good job. That isn't going to happen. The other things that I wanted to talk about a little bit is the cost of the pension board. Most costs stem from the adoption of the pay plan and the continuous increases for employees. The pension board doesn't determine the actuarial assumption or county cost. It is determined by actuary, and it is a complex formula. Sari is one of the big determining factors. I noticed that when the county executive sent her message, she indicated that, you know, it's because of the pension board that the increase as far as the budget is concerned. That's not entirely true. It's like I said, it comes from the pay plan, and I think that was the biggest mistake that many of us made here on council. I don't have anything else. Any other members of council which should speak? If not, let's go on with old business. Mr. Clerk, second reading of ordinance 74, and Kyle Maloney.
A second reading of ordinance number 74, 2019, amending the Administrative Code of Erie County, PA Library Services Department and Library Board.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Andre, seconded by Carl. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Fatiga?
Yes. The responsibility of the Library Advisory Board includes services, policy, and collection. And I am not comfortable making changes to the Administrative Code with regard to the library board. I move to delete, under Presiding Officers, Section E6. That would be the second sentence that says, "The Office of the Treasury shall be held in perpetuity by Erie County Director of Finance." And in addition, I move to delete, under Composition, Section E2, the second paragraph, which says, "The library executive director shall serve as an ex officio non-voting member of the board. The Erie County Director of Finance shall serve as an ex officio member of the board."
Second. First of all, I believe we do have to amend this before we could do that. It has to be amended prior to being able to make that.
Oh, we have to have the First Amendment.
That's right.
Or my amendment, sorry.
Right. So I'll entertain a motion to amend it.
Mr. Chairman, move to amend based on the recommendations of our solicitor at our finance meeting. He's asked if any changes are changing.
I'll second.
Moved by Dr. Faust, and seconded by Carl Anderson. Any comments on that? If not, now you can make your motion to amend the amendment.
So I move to delete, under Presiding Officers, Section E6, the second sentence, and I move to delete, under Composition, Section E2, the second paragraph.
Second. Moved by Kathy Fatiga, seconded by Andre Horton. Comments on that? Roll call on that amendment.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next, vote on the ordinance as amended.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next, the second reading of ordinance number 76. Kyle Maloney, please, Mr. Clerk.
A second reading of ordinance number 76, 2019, Amendment to the Administrative Code, Article 2, Section 5IV3B, Amendment to the Bylaws of the Erie County Planning Commission, Article 2 and 3.
So move.
By Andre?
Second.
Seconded by Carl Anderson. Comments? Roll call on ordinance 76.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Okay, under new business, maybe I can have a motion to move.
Mr. Chairman, move to make second readings of ordinances number 77, 78, 79, 80, and 81.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust, seconded by Andre Horton. Comments? Roll call on the changing of the amendment. Sorry, changing of the, for first, the second reading.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Okay, under new business, let's have the second reading of ordinance 77, entitled only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 77, 2019, Ninth, 2019 Library Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $550 for additional branch community classroom rentals.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Fatiga, seconded by Mr. Horton. Comments? Roll call.
An ordinance 77, Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Next, the second reading of ordinance number 78. In title only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 78, 2019, Tenth, 2019 Library Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $7,000 donation from friends of the library.
I'll move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. Comments? Roll call.
On ordinance 78, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Okay, second reading of ordinance 79. In title only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 79, 2019, Twenty-Ninth, 2019 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $35,000 for human resources professional fees for contract
So move. Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust, seconded by Mr. Anderson. Comments? Roll call.
On ordinance 79, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Second reading of ordinance number 80. In title only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 80, 2019, Thirtieth, 2019 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $10,127 from PCCD Gun Violence Reduction Grant for Adult Probation Overtime.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Anderson. Comments? Roll call.
On ordinance 80, Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next, the second reading of ordinance 81. In title only, please.
A second reading of ordinance number 81, 2019, Thirty-First, 2019 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $6,008, creation of new line item from PCCD Gun Violence Reduction Grant for Adult Probation Overtime.
So move. Moved by Mr. Horton?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Law. Comments?
I want to make some comments. I'm really, really grateful to adult probation. This money isn't coming out of the general fund. It's coming out of supervision fees that are assessed every adult, male, woman on probation as a family who has been profoundly affected by gun violence here in the county and indeed in the city. It just gives me pleasure to support our officers as they work the long dangerous hours helping to keep guns out of the hands of those who don't possess them. So I am pleased to support this, 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 this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? Roll call.
On ordinance 81, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Okay, let's have in title only, first reading of ordinance 82.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to roll through all of these budget ordinances?
What's that?
Would you like me to roll through all F through W?
I believe it would be a good idea. Go ahead.
All right.
They have to have first readings. For the, for the audience, these are first readings of the budget, which we will adopt at the probably the next council meeting. So you have to have a first reading, so obviously this is the first reading. The clerk will read each and every one of them. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. A first reading of ordinance number 82, 2019, 2020 Debt Service Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 83, 2019, 2020 Employee Fringe Benefit Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 84, 2019, 2020 Health Choices Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 85, 2019, 2020 Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 86, 2019, 2020 Drug and Alcohol Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 87, 2019, 2020 Children and Youth Services Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 88, 2019, 2020 Domestic Relations Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 90, or rather 89, 2019, 2020 Planning and Community Development Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 90, 2019, 2020 Library Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 91, 2019, 2020 Public Health Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 92, 2019, 2020 Public Safety Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 93, 2019, 2020 Gaming Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 94, 2019, 2020 Liquid Fuels Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 95, 2019, 2020 Pleasant Ridge Manor Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 96, 2019, 2020 Pleasant Ridge Manor Depreciation Reserve Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 97, 2019, 2020 Erie County Care Management Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 98, 2019, 2020 General Fund Budget. A first reading of ordinance number 99, 2019, 2020 Real Estate Tax Levy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Before we go on, just a little information for all of the audience. These budgets reflect approximately $457 or $458 million. We had a public hearing today. It started at 6:00. Now, you would think $457 or $458 million has to interest someone. The meeting lasted one minute. Not a single person made a comment about the budget. Not a single person. And this isn't, by the way, this is not the first time that happened. It just seems that nobody cares or nobody wants to take any interest in what's going on. But when you're spending $457 or $458 million, you would think there would be somebody in the citizenry of this large county that would come in and make some kind of comment about some part of the budget. Didn't happen. I don't think it's happened for the last five years, Carl, or Kyle.
It's been around now.
Yeah. Maybe even longer. Just for everyone's information. Okay, next is Resolution 38. Mr. Horton, please.
Resolution number 38, 2019, Approval of Tentative Lease Agreement with Central Mall Partnership for Office Space Located at 1631 Sassifras Street, Unit 344A, Erie, Pennsylvania, for Erie County Day Reporting Center.
I move.
Second.
Moved by Carol Law, seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to make a quick comment, and that is, and I will make this comment again after we do our final budget, that I want to commend and congratulate Councilwoman Law on the work that she's done on the Day Reporting Center. This has been something that she has been committed to for many, many years, and it is now through her hard work coming to fruition. So I'm honored to stand up with her tonight and support this first official step in this process by having the lease agreement. And as I said, I will congratulate her again when we finalize the budget, but Councilwoman Law, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Clark.
I'm surprised that the real estate in Erie downtown especially is worth that kind of money. You're talking $349,500 for a five-year term, and almost three-quarters of a million dollars on a 10-year lease term. It just amazes me that we spend that much money, and I'd like to see this tabled until we get our report back on the properties that the county owns and the efficiency or efficient use of these properties. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Rastetter, you, we have the opportunity as a council member to table this. Just put it on as a motion if there's a second, and we'll take a vote to see whether we table it.
Well, that's what I'll do then. I'll motion to table that.
Motion to table. Do I have a second to that motion?
I second.
I have a second to the motion. Okay, Mr. Clark, no comments on the tabling motion? Roll call.
Mrs. Law?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mrs. Fatika?
No.
Dr. Faust?
No.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
No. That failed, by the way.
Yes, I do understand.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, now the motion, or the resolution is, as, yeah, the resolution.
Is up for vote now.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one comment about.
Go ahead.
Mr. Rastetter's statement. A lot of the money that you're talking about per month is including the renovation of the area and the space that we're renting, and that is included into each monthly fee for the rent. So the rent isn't as high as it looks on paper.
I understand that. Still, it's a lot.
Go ahead.
And with regard to the importance of looking at other properties and just making some decisions, this space was chosen because of the accessibility of the other services that would help this population. So just wanted to make that comment.
With renovations, it's $990,720, and I understand about the, you know, the location. I just had to comment, especially since we're worried about the budget, eh? Nobody commented on the $400 million. I'm commenting on the million that we're spending on rent.
Andre, ask for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to preface my remarks by echoing Councilman Anderson's sentiments on the hard and glorious work that Councilwoman Law did to bring the Day Reporting Center to where it's at. I myself am not sold on the Day Reporting Center. I shared that sentiment with the President Judge, Judge Priscilla. We've had numerous discussions on it, not only, I think, the rent is high, I think the lease is too low. And I voiced those concerns at finance when it was brought up last Thursday as well. That said, I will not be supporting this. I will be voting no in affirmative. I will be voting no against it when I say I'm not sold on the Day Reporting Center. I think it's going to cost us more in the long run. My discussion with Judge Priscilla is, if we want to save money in prison or incarceration, let's do away with the bail for nonviolent offenses. Let's do away with the POBs on the new charges. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I make an additional comment?
Certainly.
Thank you. I certainly, as I said earlier, I stand up and support the Day Reporting Center, and I thought that all members of council understood what the lease terms were and what we were attempting to accomplish, so I missed the memo on that. I do appreciate the concerns that Councilman Rastetter brought up. It seems somewhat contradictory in the face of later in the agenda, we'll be talking about council undertaking a study so we can determine what our spatial needs are in an attempt to give us the tools necessary to save money in the future. But as we do that study, it will take us time to implement that, and because of the nature of getting the Reporting Center up and running and the need for it, and the fact that this space is really just a larger portion of where we already have other services, and it is convenient to those who are most in need of using those services. This is certainly, at this time and during this lease period, the best way for us to get this up and running. And so, as I said, I will stay consistent with the vote that I took and the comments that I made to support it, but I do appreciate and understand Mr. Rastetter's comments. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments? Roll call on Resolution 38.
Mr. Rastetter?
No.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
No.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Next is Resolution 39.
Resolution number 39, 2019, Resolution Approving the Hire of Outside Counsel to Recover Nationwide Market Value Adjustment.
So move.
Well, moved and seconded. Roll call on this. I have a motion to table, seconded by Mr. Anderson. Any comments? Roll call on the table. I'm sorry, no comments on the table.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next is Resolution 40.
Resolution number 40, 2019, Requesting Emergency Funding for Northwest Pennsylvania Canine Search and Rescue.
So move.
Second. Moved by Mrs. Fatika, seconded by Mr. Horton. Comments on Resolution 40? Roll call.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
No.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next is Resolution 41.
Resolution number 41, 2019, Resolution to Retain the Bostwick Design Partnership to Undertake an Erie County-Owned Facility's Inventory and Master Plan.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mrs. Patika. Comments? Roll call, Resolution 41.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Patika?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, move to the sale of our system of depositors from the number 85.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust, seconded by Mrs. Law. Any comments? Roll call on the possible sale of the repository.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Patika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes, I'll entertain a motion for a chairman. Stand in charge. Thank you very much.